I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here. Chambers.
Here.
Dahl.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Lindsay. Stephens.
Here.
And Dahl Lindsay said he would be here but he'll be late.
Okay, within the item for action we can ignore. We'll go right into recognitions. State wrestling first. Scott. Stand here.
Yep.
That's a great ring. This is perfect. So, we have five mineral point wrestlers qualify for state. I'll turn it over to Coach Schmitz. He can talk a little bit about the kids and the experience today.
Well, first of all, just the team. We ended up second in the conference. We went 15-3 on the year. We beat two teams that were at the team state tournament, but we didn't qualify. We got beat out by the state champs, Fenimore. But these five, got four guys here qualified for the state tournament. We're missing one, Nolan Springer. He's in, at baseball practice right now, so... But, these are our four, four of our seniors. They've been great for the past four years. Been great leaders. And they kind of showed out on the mat at the state tournament. Garrett lost his first match, but, you know, just making it there. Garrett came to Mineral Point when he was a freshman and got involved in the wrestling program and it was great to see him finish it off, making it to the, to the Kohl Center. Then we had Kayden Carey, one of our captains, placing fifth for us. It was his third trip to the state tournament and capturing fifth place. Danny Pitts, another fifth place finisher for us. Danny's one of six mineral point wrestlers to qualify for the state tournament all four years. So that's quite an accomplishment. It wasn't quite what he wanted, fifth place, but, you know, he's, he's just a, a great student. He's a great kid, just somebody that you embody a mineral point wrestler to be. He's great with young kids, you know, I can't say enough about him. We're really gonna miss him. And he was one of our captains. And last is Logan Schmitz. One of the last of a long long family history. There's been a Schmitz in the wrestling program since 1968. And next year will be the first time there won't be a Schmitz somewhere in the program, on the mat. So, he capped it off, lost a close overtime match in the semifinals, but came back, showed a lot of heart, winning after a loss and took third, you know, so... Can't say enough about him as a coach and very proud of him as a, as an uncle. So, did a great job for us all four years. All four of them are four-year letter winners. So, we're really gonna miss him next year. Then we got Greg Burke, volunteer assistant this year, was a two-time state champ for me a few years back, wrestled for UW Wisconsin team. And then my longtime assistant here, Corey Silco, will be flipping roles in a couple weeks here. I'll be his assistant on the golf team. We work pretty good together, so... You know, it was a great year for us. We had a, a young team pretty much, so next year we're looking for some big things. But I can't say enough about these four. If no one was here, he's only a sophomore, so we've got him back for two more years, so we're gonna be looking to him for a lot of leadership stuff. We only have one senior next year, so we're gonna really look towards him as a leader. And he placed fifth for us there for sophomore. Did a great job for us, so...
Congratulations. Everybody's gonna want to shake your hand. Two of us are coming around the table.
Congratulations.
Silco, congratulations.
Can I stretch in gymnastics?
Did you bring anybody with you later? Wear outfits. Gymnastics? Unless you can use a band. That's right. So Dodge Point, Dodge O'Minter Point Co-op for gymnastics, and we're very fortunate for this opportunity. I'm gonna turn it over to the coach to kind of explain, kind of how you got there and who you brought with you, okay?
Well, today I have Emma Stephens, who is a freshman with Mineral Point. She is one of the four of the pointers that we have this year. So, we have her sister Martina the la, yeah, Martina the last four years, but she wasn't able to compete, so we're excited to have Emma back with us and competing, another pointer, so that's great. Then I have Maya Lemansky, who is from Dodgeville, and Tessa Baca, who is from Dodgeville also. These girls belong to the varsity team, who actually competed at the state competition, so big round of applause for them because they put in a lot of work to get to this point during the offseason and during the season. They work really hard and dedicate a lot of time and energy to gymnastics. So, really, it's just a lot of hard work and mental strength and toughness from these girls to be able to do what they do.
In conditions just a big thank you to Dodgeville for supporting the co-ops with Mineral Point, the combined athletic groups. Absolutely. They provide opportunities for our students that we wouldn't necessarily be able to provide ourselves. Absolutely. Thank you very much. Congratulations. And Emma, Emma told me she gets it all. Yeah. I can mention, she's not here. The third piece we had in recent history, the WI has had a three-point shooting contest on Saturday of the state tournament. They do one for the girls and one for the boys. This year, Mallory Lindsay from Mineral Point qualified. You have to be in the top-two percentage in your division and you need to at least have attempted 75 three-point shots during the course of the season. So coaches put their stats in, kind of on a wide-open website, and you can kind of track how it goes. So pictured here is Mallory Lindsay up at the Resh Center on Saturday morning. Mallory's percentage place, would have placed her fourth out of all the girls showing up. And as a freshman, Mallory competed well, did the Mineral Point faithful, very proud, made it into the semifinals and was beat in a tiebreaker. I don't know if you've ever seen the pros do a shooting, three-point shooting contest, and they have what's called the money ball. And it was the money ball that broke the tie. Mallory was ahead by two and the gal in the tiebreaker hit the money ball to put her one head, one point ahead. And actually, that was a young lady then that ended up winning it all. So Mallory came in third place representing the pointers on Saturday morning. Mallory couldn't be here tonight, but is very proud, again, representing Mineral Point School District in a, in a wonderful fashion.
Okay, we'll move on to board communications received. Anybody? I have a couple. Dear staff members, thank you for the donation to the Mineral Point Excellence in Education in the honor of Lois Wainwright. Please know your contribution makes additional educational opportunities possible for our students. With sincere sympathy to Mitch and his family, Nancy Harker and any board members. And then, we also have, you definitely being board president, I'm automatically on a board at Southwest Tech that I didn't know anything about. And unfortunately, we have a meeting that I'm, somebody from Mineral Point needs to attend on the 21st. We can go to Dodgeville, they have a telecommunications thing set up there, but unfortunately, March 21st, I have other conflicts, so I'm wondering if anybody has that date open.
What is this regarding?
Appointment, they are looking for three new board members. They've only had one come forward, so they're going to, and I think this must be a misprint because it says they're going to approve April 5th minutes, but I think they meant
March would be my guess.
Yeah, so, anyway, they want to nominate the one person that came forward and then they're hoping that we have other people we can nominate beyond that board.
They need a quorum, and every school district can see the, CISA III is a member of this?
The 30th, yeah.
So they, so I'm asking, we make every effort to have somebody in attendance? And basically Nope. Basically, if you went to Dodgeville, it'd be something set up like this, it'd be, you'd have a camera and a telepresence so you could be a part of the meeting but not have to drive to Fenimore and ever be there.
And like I said, it's March 21st at 7:00 PM, or even go to Fenimore. So if anybody can come up with that date that works, let me know, please. Otherwise, I will just let them know that we're not gonna be in attendance. Okay, did anybody else have anything?
7:00 PM, either, either place for Yep.
Okay, we're gonna move on into citizens comments. Anybody sign up?
Yep.
Okay. We are gonna limit, normally it's three minutes, I will give five, so Nancy, you're first up.
Can I pass and come back, or do I have to do it now?
Do you not want to do it now?
Well, I can do it now. Okay, I would like to comment on the Mineral Point fact sheet that was sent to everybody in Mineral Point regarding the referendum. I have concerns about the estimated tax impact. The full estimated tax impact of both the operations referendum and the facilities referendum were not included on the tax impact section here in the form. They were included in the 2018 referendum fact sheet. I feel like that did not give the community the true perspective of what this referendum is going to cost. I also thought it was interesting that the referendum fact sheet did not give the complete mill rate for the 2019 referendum. The mill rate will be 1478. That is going to be the third highest mill rate in Wisconsin if you compared it to the 2019 mill rate list that you can find on the Department of Public Instruction website. So those are some of my concerns. I would like to make sure everybody goes to some of those places to see what other schools are paying. We are, simply put, way high when it comes to mill rate and taxation here in Mineral Point. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Lisa.
I'd also like to talk a little bit about the, the school plan. I believe that there was concern with the last referendum that people didn't, were not properly informed, but I think that there's a big hole in this one, and that is what's going to happen to the old building if we build a new one. And no one that I have talked to knows anything, and I'm basically hearing that it won't even be discussed until after the referendum passes. First of all, I can see that building from my house, and I'm not the only person in this room that can do that. We already have two old school buildings. The middle school building's not bad, it's apartments, it's serving a purpose. The old high school is not what I would call a jewel in the crown of Mineral Point. It's really not in very good shape. If you've been in there, it's kind of scary. And if that's what's going to happen to this other building, I don't want it in my neighborhood. And if the building is in such bad shape that it needs to be replaced, who's going to buy it? Who's going to put any money into making it into anything? Which means it probably needs to be raised, and that's gonna cost money too. And that's not a piece of this whole package either. Looking at probably, I don't know, $8 or, I don't remember, my husband was looking at the figures of raising a building and it's, it depends on what it is, but it's, I'm looking at a million dollars or more to tear that building down. Talk about not being informed, I need to know that before I can vote yes on this referendum. Until then, I cannot.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you for your comments. And we'll move into items for information. Oh, I'm sorry. For all the minutes. Can we have a quiet, please? Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes.
I've got a question for this report and discussion. So, I was not in attendance at the personnel committee meeting. And I was looking for So I guess, so, most of the personnel committee meeting, am I not finding it? I mean, it was basically in closed session, correct?
Correct.
So, how does, how does a board member who didn't attend a closed session get an update on what was discussed in closed session? Is that, is that the risk of being, is that the risk of being absent? I mean, is that the price I pay for being absent? Or, it seems like, it seems like the board should be informed of what the personnel committee discussed, I mean unless
No, I actually make a very good point about
Unless a summary that's safe to provide an open session is adequate.
Well Mitch and I talked about putting this on the agenda for April because I'm questioning even in our close, regular closed sessions, that we don't do a very good job of keeping track of minutes, even though we've all been in all of our closed sessions. It's like, because if something comes up, I, I keep notes, but in all honesty, it's like, I'm not a real fast writer, so if Tony says something and then you say something, I might miss something. So that needs to be discussed. And we're gonna actually put that on the agenda for April. Just because of that, and this is another perfect example. It's like, normally, the chair of that committee should probably email you and myself since I wasn't there either. And, but I have a feeling we're going to get that in closed sessions.
Sure, sure. And, and I noticed that, so I didn't raise anything ahead of time, but I mean, just, I don't know if I can approve these minutes if I wasn't present and there really aren't any minutes other than
Well, technically
Should I just abstain?
Or technically only, we're not approving those ones. Because we don't have any of those minutes.
Yeah, minutes, it's just a convenient closed session, discuss it.
No action.
No action taken?
Yeah. Okay. So, we'll revise his, Tony doesn't object, we will revise that we're gonna approve the minutes, and we will only approve the closed session in that there was no action taken. Okay? Does that make sense?
It says there was no action taken.
I know, but we're going to prove that along with the minutes. We're not approving the actual, what took place in that meeting because we don't know.
Oh, I, okay.
I just wanted to add Claire.
So for the, which one was that, the personnel committee?
Yes, yes, close.
So, we're approving
The regular meeting minutes.
The regular Four, four sets of minutes. Oh, I'm sorry, that was previously, so So regular 211.
Yeah, we're approving 211, and what we're just acknowledging that no action was taken in the personnel committee.
Right. I think we should And see what you can recommend. I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually have Mitch look for some legal advice on this. It's something that we have done for years, and I think that we've been very lax, and I think we need to get on top of it, so...
Thank you.
Okay.
We'll stay open in closed session then tonight.
Yes.
So we need to vote out.
So, for all the minutes, we have a motion by Tony, a second by Nate. Let's call it, we're all on that, please.
We're approving the regular 211 minutes and acknowledging the 213 closed session minutes.
That no action was taken.
That no action was taken.
Correct.
Dahl?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Stephens?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dahl? Or Dunn, sorry. Bastin?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move with the items for information.
HSR?
HSR, update.
So Tim from HSR is here.
Hello. Thanks for having me tonight. Couple things I want to be able to discuss a little bit more. So thank you, Tim Rupert from HSR. There's a few things I want to go over tonight as we discuss the potential of the referendum coming up in April. Just want to talk a little bit more about the open house and prep for the next open house. Last time we were here, you talked about we have a better budget comparison between the previous referendum and the current referendum, and just the differences between that, so I'll go over that. There's been some comments on energy efficiency and what that really entails. And then also, if there's any questions, I know one of the actual insiders on our contract, now would be a time, if anything, to discuss that. And then some upcoming publications, we have a newsletter coming up as well, and I believe everybody saw the draft, so we can discuss that as well. So up on the screen here is, should look familiar, this is the upcoming 2000 referendum, so this is for the 19.5 million. And this is exactly the same data as what we showed from day one. We break it into different components of what this project really entails. So we have the site development costs, new elementary construction costs, planning at 72,000 square feet with this facility, $200 square foot for raw construction costs, gets us to 14.4. Within any project like this, you'll have what we call allowances. And those allowances are technology infrastructure components, your smart boards, your cameras, a lot of your access control of those items, furnitures, fixtures, equipments, those are your loose furniture associated with a project like this. Kitchen equipment is usually isolated in allowance, we can track it. And then playground equipment, and then especially in this neck of the woods, geotechnical, and making sure that some of the soft costs associated with that. So we have allowances within there of 90,000. Project contingency, even though we're talking about new construction here, it's still early in the planning process, so project contingency basically gives that flexibility as we keep moving forward. And then our potential estimated architectural engineering fees as well, for a total cost of 19.5 million. So it is based on culinary master, master planning type conversations. Basically, a lot of it has to do with what we see industry standards going forward, and that's how these budgets are put together. We have a pretty good idea of the site, and we have a pretty good idea of the square footage, and that's really our starting point for our conversations. Obviously, once we get into the development much more, we'll get much more detail, and this one sheet will become 20, 30 sheets for comparison. So last comment was, this was upcoming April 2019 referendum, the 2018 November referendum. Obviously, we weren't a part of that, however, if we were a part of it, we would have done a budget breakout very similar to previous one. So we tried to break apart in a similar fashion to give a comparison. Obviously, this was 11.92 million for addition and renovation project. So site development costs, one of the big concerns of that site is be able to fix long-term the site drainage concerns. There's also stormwater management and some of the traffic flow on the site. Very similar conversation whether we do addition renovation here or whether we do new construction, it really starts at the site, setting up the site fundamentally well. So this is, you know, basically backing up what we believe we would get. We're showing correct structural foundation, floor settling, we show a $2 million allowance. We talked about that last time. That is our best estimate at this point, however, it is a conservative estimate. As we keep developing these type of plans, we would really fine-tune that. Of all the risk items within here, there is risk associated with that type of item, just because unless we have x-ray vision, you know, we have to be able to open it up to really see what's going on there. So we have correct structural foundation as well as building renovation at 3.375. Previously, best to my knowledge, that was 6,370 allocated in that fund. That's, well, I put a little caveat in there, that's not a true comparison because they did not break apart allowances and the architectural engineering fees separately. So that is a little bit of difference, however, it's not, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. We thought it was beneficial to really break apart the same way that our one was broken apart for comparison. Building addition and construction costs, we know very well what the building addition will take. That is a variable that we feel much more comfortable with, other than, you know, renovation's always a higher, higher risk. So with the square footage that we're talking about, right around 20,000 square feet, 4.8 million and some change is a good number to be planning at this point. We also do want to note that it is a higher cost per square foot for addition, and a lot of that than new construction. The reason that is, is there's, it associates phasing with a project like that. Anytime you're doing addition, we have to capitalize on the busiest construction period, which is summer, and really try to get a lot of work in place in a very short order. What that means is we're paying a premium to do that at that timeframe, so the costs go up a little bit per square foot. And then similar before, we have the same allowances allocated for this eleven point nine two addition renovation as we do this new construction, because those are very much the same type of conversation. Project contingency and agency review. You'll notice that while the project's a little bit smaller, that percent is a little bit higher. It's basically at this planning stage, because there's more risk associated with the addition and renovation, especially within that site. So we have a plug number of allowance of eight hundred and fifty thousand there, to get us to eleven point nine two million.
Yeah. I got a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
Thank you for presenting this. First is, can you just talk about how you calculate contingency?
Yep.
And how it's different based on a remodel expansion project versus a new project?
Absolutely, and that's always a question. We want to be able to track that, so contingency, that's the district's money. All things considered equal, we want to make sure we can turn that over to the other project, or to the district at the end of the job. So we, we want to track that from day one, and we want to track it all the way through the whole process. When we do new construction on a green field, there's little, there's less risk associated with that type of project. There's still soil conditions and some of those type of risks, but there's more, there's more knowns than unknowns. When you do a project like this, we, we allocate a little higher risk to that type of project. So contingencies can range anywhere from three percent on the low end to twelve percent on the high end of a project.
Of the total project or the hard construction?
Of the construction cost.
Okay.
So it, we're somewhere right kind of in the middle.
Okay.
So as we, basically what we do is as the risks go away, as we know more, those contingencies tend to shrink. And as we keep moving forward in the process, we can fine tune that a little bit more. Another, another risk is just bid date. Contractors are busy right now, and there's risk there. So if we are bidding at an unfavorable time period, there's risk associated with that as well. And a number like that will help protect it. Because these numbers are, they're all in numbers, we can't go over them. So we need that flexibility to be able to adjust the scope as we go.
You also mentioned the, there's a higher cost per square foot for a model project for obvious reasons you stated, that makes sense. Off the top of your head, do you know what this higher cost is, or I can just?
We could, yeah, we don't fact check it, but yeah, usually it's ten to fifteen percent higher for that type of square footage.
Okay.
We would try to minimize that. How we can minimize it is make the phasing make the most sense. So if we can start construction while school's still being occupied, so we aren't doing all the construction during the summertime period, for instance, would be a way to minimize that.
I have one more question.
Absolutely.
Now that you've kind of given your estimate of remodels, since you've taken a look at it versus, you know, FPH's estimates and, and the cost, and your, your estimation of the foundation costs, is there anything in, in the originally planned budget that you felt like needed to be cut in order to stay under project? I mean, is this missing anything that maybe the voters voted on in November?
I don't know if missing would be the right, right way to approach that. There's more, I'd say, we're being a little more cautious on the foundation piece. We mentioned that, and we're isoling that as a separate component, so we can track it. A little bit more independent. As far as overall scope goes, we still think we can achieve all of the scope that was promised at that timeframe. What might get backed out is the amount of renovation. And that's really the only variable in this project, is the amount of renovation. Because just like your house, you can go gut the entire project and start over, or you can keep some components and work within the existing components a little bit more. So that type of flexibility, I think we'll keep fine tuning as we go if this is the, the option.
Okay.
But it is a, like every project is a budget, budget sensitive project, and we gotta be aware of that from day one, and be able to make those, make those coyum decisions.
Okay.
Just a quick, I just want to clarify that I'm looking at examples. The note about the six point three million allocated for building renovation and will result in less comprehensive, that's six point three included
Correct.
contingencies
Correct.
and fees
Correct.
and allowances
Correct.
which are broken out.
Correct.
So that, those two numbers are not really apples-to-apples.
They are not, and I wanted to definitely put that in comparison, because they are not apples-to-apples. The way we broke this all is fundamentally different than the way that was all kind of grouped together. We wanted to show, show the breakout as much as we could, so we can track it. When you group numbers together, you can't track them and isolate them as closely.
Right.
But yes, it is very much, we tried to do apples-to-apples comparison, but we want to make that.
I just don't want anybody jumping us, so we're looking at three million dollars.
Yep. So that's where I don't believe we're gonna have to reduce the scope. It is something that we're gonna have to be aware of, and fine tune as we keep going.
A couple of questions, Tim, starting at the top, site development. It's, uh, site drainage concerns. And to, to put in the bus lane. I mean, to me, that looks a little underwhelming.
And it, a lot of it is, so when we talk about new construction for the building addition, a lot of the site costs for the building prep are associated with that. So the site costs would be more, the drives and drainage is concerned on that site, however, it's a, it's a, it's a smaller site.
All right, did, did you have any parent drop off or pickup of children planned into this?
So at, at this point, I think that's all in on the table to be able to discuss more. It is a little bit more limited site, so we want to utilize the site a little bit better. Some of the plans that were previously put together had some site regulation that we don't believe is actually feasible.
Sure.
And then, um, the second line item there, if you back out two million for structural, it doesn't leave a whole lot left to, to remodel the existing classroom areas. What, what could we get for one point seven?
Yeah, so while we sit, while we're isoling that component, to remodel the, the existing area, the foundations, we'll be putting in new finishes as part of that too. So we're doing new slab, and new, basically, when you do that kind of work, you're gonna be tearing down the ceiling, you're gonna be replacing the lighting, you're gonna be doing a lot of work that's also incorporated in renovation.
Okay.
So one point seven billion will go farther because of a lot of the upfront costs are spent in that two million as well.
Just for point of reference, there, the, from the FPH budget right now, parking bus lanes, stormwater is total budgeted seven twenty-six.
Seven hundred and twenty-six, okay.
So it, it seems like it's fairly similar.
Fairly similar.
Do you remember in conversations with FPH, was the parent pickup and drop off addressed?
Yeah, I, I, well, remember, they had it, they had it come down and right by the house, and, and there was some concern, concern, right by the old gym, the current gym.
Separate of the bus lane.
Separate of the bus lane, and I think there were some concerns about that being a little tight, and how that was gonna work.
So it was addressed, but at a very preliminary conceptual level, yeah.
So like all of these numbers, as we dive more into them, you do see some fluctuation in these numbers always, but we want to have a tracking mechanism that from where we start to when we finish. And as we make decisions, we can update these type of numbers, and that's common for this type of process.
Any other questions for Tim?
Can we just look at the renovation in nineteen five?
Yes.
Any questions? Tim?
Yeah.
When you bid out a project, any project, whether it's a school, a business, a renovation project versus new construction, are our construction companies more aggressive with either?
You'll see areas of specialty, so some contractors will do more new construction, some contractors will do additions renovation, and you'll see some specialty in that area. The good thing about this area and really all of Wisconsin is we have some great contractors, and they do great work, especially in this market. So I'm, I'm not too concerned about that.
Okay.
My, my bigger concern is, you know, as people get more busy, they start to creep up their prices a little bit more. But that's, that's the nature of construction in general. Material costs continue to, you know, follow the inflation rates, you know, two to three percent per year. And that's been pretty, holding pretty true. So there's things that we can do to out minimize that.
At the old, the, the old elementary or the elementary now?
With the, or the gym was gonna go.
Has there been any kind of slip of boring, any kind of look at what that is gonna be like?
Um, so we, yeah, we do have some, when the nineteen ninety addition was built, we have some geotechnical information from that, that was really helpful to getting more of estimate of what was going on here. So we have a better understanding of what's going on in that current site. And a lot of it will, we assumed within here, that we'll be removing the clay and going down with suitable fill. Bedrock is a great foundation, used to do it. So it's not something to be worried about. When we start running site utilities, that's where bedrock does become a little more problematic. Was that answered? So yeah, we did start to look at the geotechnical for the existing as well. For a project like this, we'll probably be doing most of thirty, forty borings to get a better understanding. Include the interior ones to get a better understanding of what's underneath.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the therapy dog elementary.
Hello. Thanks for having us. I just want to let you know that the idea came to us, I've been teaching for twenty-seven years, and I've seen a lot of kids that have social, emotional, anger, anxiety, issues that I've not seen in the past, so I'm thinking something needs to be maybe changed, and since we're a progressive district, that that might be the answer right there. Maybe some of the board members might want a therapy dog too, yeah. It's gonna be a good time for this.
And I have, um, I've been thinking this a couple of years. We had somebody who works with our children on a specialized basis come in with his therapy dog that he utilizes in other schools, and you could just see the kids flock to it, and typically the kids, well, they all flock to him, but the kids who need it the most get the closest. And we have seen, like, like Denise said, a huge increase in traumatized kids and emotional needs, and the time being spent by staff with not a whole lot of success, unfortunately, is disheartening. And I really believe that this could be one part of the answer. This is mine, okay. This is what, not only we believe, but there's research to show that students, there's an increase in their empathy and compassion when there's a therapy dog on site, improved self-esteem, decrease in anxiety, and we can use this in a number of settings, you know, it can be in a room where there's gonna be a big test, or it can be for the child with the juvenile anxiety or the separation anxiety. Lessen the emotional trauma for some of them. There has been research that has verified increased academic confidence, most especially in reading, decreased aggression, and improvement in self-confidence.
So if you want all that, we have this. And this is Cooper, and I'm not sure if you, guys are familiar with Floyd and Claudius Four, they have the sleepy valley kennels. And they sell these labs for like nine hundred and fifty dollars, where she would donate one to our school. She was a, she's a retired special ed teacher, and he also worked with, I think Tech Ed, maybe, his basketball coach in the school. So when I brought this idea to her, I actually didn't mention the donating, I said if you could just discount one, and we could see where this would go, and so it wouldn't cost us anything to have the puppy. And, and when I contacted her and I said this is actually a discussion item, not an action item, and she said, well, I saved one for you, so she kind of picked one that was more calm, and and she said, this is, this is actually the one that we would, that we would have if this, if this gets approved. So I'm very thankful that they would think highly of this also, and see, they have a granddaughter who has Down syndrome, and they see the dogs in hospitals and different facilities where it does make a huge difference in a, in a child's life, so seeing that and being given donation was, I think, a huge, that was for us too.
And a therapy could, dog can be any breed, it's more on their temperament, but yellow labs are, yellow labs, and a, a number of the therapy dogs are. So some of the benefits that has been proven, physical, the reduction of pain and the improvement in blood pressure, which some of our kids might deal with, I don't know, but more, more so is the social and cognitive benefits.
Right here, yeah.
Yes, this dog could go anywhere. Go anywhere, meaning if need be. So, um, the social benefits, that the kids can bond together over the dog and the increased interaction with classmates with the dog. And here again, the empathy and understanding, kindness and softness and that type of thing, and cognitive benefits. The reading, memory, problem solving, when you actually work through the dog or with the dog, the kids are a little more open and less scared to put out their thoughts in there.
And a couple more benefits, emotional, their mood, and for some of our children, they might not laugh during the day at school, which seems very sad, but to find some emotional and self-esteem, self-esteem and acceptance might make that a more happy environment for them. And also the, the environment, it lifts their mood, and usually after, if they are nervous about a dog, after they are around a puppy or a dog for a while, it does make them more happy.
So we just brainstormed how we thought this would look at our school. Basically, the dog is with the owner or the handler, but can be loaned out or whatever to other environments within the school. A morning greeter. Having the kids experience a, a friendly face and a wagging tail and whatever after their bus ride or their morning at home. Reading with kids, visit with the kids who are experiencing emotional difficulties, like I said, we have several meltdowns a day sometimes going on, and they take a long time to get those kids regulated again, and I think a therapy dog would make that a much faster transition. And like I said before, they could go to the kids or the classrooms where there's some testing going on, maybe some high-stake testing, or just a kid who's more anxious about it. Working with the kids on social, emotional skills, they can role-play with the dog, you can invite, use them in small group settings or more in a classroom, less than while you're doing some role-playing or working on those skills. Comforting the kids who are experiencing trauma. Again, an increased number of both those, and the kids with high anxiety.
And we do have a note, this is a short video on some of the reading research on dogs.
C University conducted a new study which found that second grade students who read out loud to therapy dogs in the classroom setting had improved literacy and better attitudes about reading in general. One group of students read to a therapy dog for thirty minutes once a week for six weeks, while the control group maintained normal class curriculum. Reading skills were assessed bi-weekly by researchers as well as students' attitudes about reading. Research assistant Deborah Lender said, "Our results suggest that reading to dogs in an academic setting has the potential to provide motivation, which will help inform future research."
Yeah, that's okay, yeah, that's okay, and there's one more Mitch after that, if you wanna, you can cancel that one.
Not that easy. Grammarly can help. This sentence is grammatically correct.
Is this it?
For that, you have to go on to that and go back into the art therapy cats. It's on the next page, Mitch, yeah, the next one.
There you go.
Back one, there you go.
We have a new definition of teacher's pet. Therapy dogs are putting in extra hours at a fourth grade class in Charlotte, North Carolina, helping kids read. The pups' names are Rosie, Wilson, and Drew. They're learning as scholars. Students read to the dogs instead of to their teachers. It's part of a six-week program to prepare the kids for a crucial reading test, and the therapy dogs appear to take the pressure off and help build confidence. Dogs are non-judgmental, they're not going to correct a child or criticize a child if they miss a word.
When I'm in class, I read, but sometimes I stumble over words, but I sort them out, and then I get them.
So great, teachers say it's been a positive experience for those students, and now they're thinking of reading as fun and not work.
Okay, that, yeah, that was it. So taking the first step with, I was thinking about this all last year, and not quite sure how to get it off. And then when Denise said she was interested, I was in need as another team member, I think. We've, this isn't something we'd come to lightly. I went to a breakout session at a conference. We've had several emails back and forth with another teacher who has a therapy dog. Looked into the insurance, I mean, I know there's unknowns here, it'll be a first for us. But just so you know, we haven't taken it lightly, we've done a little bit background.
Can I ask you some questions?
Yeah.
First, I, I would just make the count, I'm in favor of this, but I had several questions about this, and I think it's a great idea. Housing, where would you put the kennel? Who would feed the dog? Who would be responsible for training? How about allergies in the classroom with these animals that I've seen pop that way? And then insurance, like you said, biting injuries, and then all that sort of stuff.
That's all coming up. That's great questions, Dr. Lacy.
Send them listen to the teachers.
That's right, pay attention for a second, we're not, we're not done.
I'm glad with the questions.
We love working on this thing right here. Okay, so the, the legal part is I would actually own the dog. So I was talking to my insurance provider, and, and the insurance I have actually is an educational insurance, so it's in an other classroom. So the liability part is like three hundred thousand, and then you have like a million dollar umbrella. So he said he totally be covered with that, and, and being a lab, there's, apparently from insurance perspective, there's a list of dogs that your insurance would be a little higher, the German Shepherd or a pit bull or something. But labs are not on the dangerous list for bites, so that, that helps quite a bit. So I did check into that, and as for allergies, I did talk to Julie, our, the school nurse, and she said as of right now, it's a very minimal amount, but sometimes you don't know that until the dog is near somebody. Kids might not have a dog, so they don't know if they're allergic to it. But we would, like I said, kind of came up with the, with the grooming and I don't know if there's any special, like in, or kids that have allergies, every kid does not need to be in contact with this dog. So if there's a kid that had high allergic reaction to it, then we wouldn't have, it's not gonna walk around the school just freely.
Right, yeah, it's not freely, it's, it's with a handler at all times, and if, if a child did have an allergy, we wouldn't put it into, we wouldn't put the child into Denise's classroom.
Right, they wouldn't be in that situation.
Animal maintenance, that's basically gonna be Denise, she's the owner of the dog. She will be responsible for all the veterinarian checks and taking care of the dog, training the dog. There's several options available in the Madison area where we can get our, she can get her canine Good Citizen certification. So she, along with the dog, would receive training and get, pass the test and get certified. Fear of dogs, that happened, we brought in Noah. There were, Noah was this little thing that, with a little wheelchair, and we did have some kids that were afraid, and they backed up. We let them sit on a desk or maintain their distance. I've read several articles where what they have found is, yeah, there's kids like that, but the more they're exposed to the dog, the clothes, they get down off the desk, and then pretty soon they creep up a little closer and a little closer. And most often, it's, they haven't had an experience with the dog, or possibly a negative experience. So we, we certainly be respectful of what, this dog is not gonna be forced on anyone who isn't comfortable.
And this was a survey that was done from a different school, but we thought we could do something like this for our staff, and ask certain questions about how things are now, and then given we have the chance to incorporate a therapy dog, then we would survey our staff too. So just kind of give some information on the improvements that they have at their school.
Yeah, this was a school in Madison, and it was presented by, in that breakout session that I went to. And this is just, yeah, this is just cute. How can they not?
So we like cute, so. We got that one, okay, next. And next we're just funny, 'cause, oh, you know, we like funny. And then one more, that's funny. Right, isn't that a great doctor thing right there? Yeah, we thought.
So I know some things that will come up. We did get a couple examples of board policies or school policies that schools had developed regarding a therapy dog. We do have a copy of a parent letter that went out, and this school after a few years did a passive permission or an opt-out. It's easier to keep track of. And anyway, I have high hopes.
Thank you.
You're doing me a better than this.
I know, why do you think so? All right. I mean, who would want that? What's going to talk to Claudia about, because the only thing is it's a little time-sensitive, only because of, it's a puppy. And that, and I was talking to, it was a Badger Kennel Club, and she did say, if you get a puppy, bring it in there just for a few minutes every day, just to kind of smell the environment, and, and it would be, it would be like gradual experience. Wouldn't be, this dog would be there all day, so it might start for a couple hours. And then, you know, since I live in town, and, you know, we get lunch at our school, I could take the dog home or slowly incorporate it into our day, and then I don't think they actually, to be therapy dog certified, the dog needs to be a year. So we would work, so I'd get the puppy like hopefully soon, and then start some of these puppy classes. And then after a year, we actually have the certification, then it would be, would be a therapy dog.
As I said, that's where the mom and kids at, her mom and dad.
I think we love dogs, we're dog people, but not everybody.
And you set up some rules, you know, you just don't go up to, yeah. We can work the dog, and, yeah, you just don't go pat him.
Does Julie have anything to add back there?
I think as opposed to a passive consent, I would much rather see an active consent, because then parents can actually, I think from a legal perspective, it would carry more weight if something were to happen, because then all those kids are identified, if they're sensitive emotionally and/or medically. So I'd like to see an active consent, I think that's good.
So they do that.
I know they've done that, and they, you know, then they went to that. So maybe start though.
Thanks, that's great. Yeah, we, my last school, we tried to bring in a therapy dog, similar situation, so you just had a passion for it, saw some benefits. It wasn't supported at the district level, so it never went through. But I supported it then, and I would, I support it now. I, I've seen some of the summaries of the studies that you all are referring to, and it's pretty, pretty solid.
New Clarissa has had one for like ten years, I talked to their counselor, and they spent like ten years with it, and she's all like positive things.
Works at nursing homes.
Yeah, and like Claudia said, like hospitals, you see, they mean, right, it's, they're, they're all over, so.
Did that answer all your questions, Dr. Lacy?
Yeah, yeah, so it's Denise who gets all the burden, really, it sounds like.
Yeah, you mean joy, joy, I see that.
Oh, joy, okay. I'd recommend I go over retriever though.
Unless we have any real objections.
Multiple hand exchange.
We will.
Well, primarily to her dogs, there would be others identified in the school that could.
Yes, if I could.
We would give multiple.
So there could be somebody else, yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah, she can, yeah.
I still have kids, I'm still teaching the kids.
Okay, since, since we're not hearing any objections, we will bring this back in April. I just can look for a policy and, and then an action item.
Did you want us, did you want me to leave policy? I didn't make copies.
Any, any else from us or?
That'd be good.
Do you think any costs are gonna be reimbursed by the district?
I don't think so, you know, I, I think what we would do, well, I was thinking about this actually, and, and for the stuff that goes at home, obviously, we would pay for at home, but the school thinks that there would be like a, you know, a kennel. They do say the research has had, you need like a kid-free zone for, for the dog. I would probably do something with the grants, we've had different grant programs out there, or there's a Donors Choose website I could go on. So I don't think it would, I wouldn't be.
Donate it free.
Or maybe like fundraising, I would be like kids, so I don't, see if it'd be an expense for the?
I think maybe just a little plan, you know, anticipated costs, you know.
Oh, it comes up, sure.
Anticipated, you know, revenue sources, and that might help first.
First, I hope that if we're gonna go forward, and I love the idea, I think that this will shake down.
Yeah, we will, we will.
The building.
It wouldn't be a great. And it wouldn't be a great, we got the, you know.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Mitch.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to budget update.
So looking back a year ago, in February, basically, at this point in time in February, I'd use fifty-four percent of our budget, fifty-four point two eight percent of our budget, looking at this current school year, fifty-five point three one. So basically, we're at a percentage point, so basically on track as to how we spent money out a year ago and to where we are at this point in time. So I think, you know, there was some, there was money at the end of the year that went into fund balance. So barring any emergencies between now and the end of the school year, we seem to be kind of on that same track, that there will be budget monies as we move up. I have asked the staff to look at their current school year expenditures and what they need for the remainder of the school year, and try to get those requests in by Friday of the spring break. And also then start to look at their budget requests for next year, so we can start to try to put together a budget for next year, and kind of the same deadline is when I would like to see those turned in to building administrators.
Which one of those accounts has spent forty-six? Isn't that the one that we have money that we've set aside the last few years?
Yeah, that would not be on, that's not, that would be not on.
Is that something that you can ask Marcia for, for April, so that we have that figure?
Yep.
Cause that is the right fund, right, forty-six?
Correct.
I should probably get that and email that out before we go.
Only two of our board members.
That'd be great. So. It's in it.
That's it.
So we'll move on. Elementary building options, if spring referendum is successful.
So this was, has to be put on just as an item for discussion for, as board members, for you to start the conversation. What, what is it that you would like to see moving forward? If the referendum is successful in April, you know, I heard one time, maybe, you know, you form a committee with community members, people that are part of that neighborhood to sit on a committee to determine, you know, what's, what's a course of action. But it's just an opportunity for, for you as board members to kind of begin that, that conversation.
So if the referendum passes, we will use the building for about two more years?
Correct, yep.
While they're building up here.
Correct.
So there's a two-year period that can be used to decide what we want to do with that building.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, but you had a couple good comments at the forum as far as your general ideas of, in your world, what would, what would happen? And I guess I have another thought, I wanted to get your perspective on, if you've talked to anyone, any developers, city officials, anyone that would maybe have some expertise on how to handle a project, like a decommissioning or a renovation project like this, and that kind of a building, that has given you any opinion on it?
To date, no. I had tried to search out, I know Lisa had mentioned something about, you know, cost for demolition. I've tried to search out, are there any companies around that, that specialize in that? One, one individual who has a construction company said he could knock it down, but he doesn't have the equipment to haul it away or do anything with the site, so he wouldn't, he wouldn't even begin to consider, you know, putting in any kind of a proposal or a bid. So he goes, I couldn't accurately give you a number. And, you know, other than, again, kind of some of the rumors as to businesses or interests, you know, that's as far as I know, that's all. No one has reached out to me to say, hey, I, you know, you might be leaving a building, we'd be interested.
Right, that's basically what I'm asking, so no one has.
No, no one does that.
Cool, called you.
I, I get a lot of, hey, I hear you're going to referendum, we'd be interested in being your construction manager, we'd be interested in building it, we, I get a lot of that, but I don't get anybody saying, you know, we got ideas for your old building, so nothing to this date.
Well, you made some comments about maybe the future of the baseball field, and that you, you like the idea of preserving the playgrounds, I think. I thought those, those are interesting comments, at least to maybe start a conversation.
I, I think probably partly through the summer, FEH had kind of put together some potentials for upgrading the baseball field. One of, the cheapest option was to reposition it in its current location. And then use the existing site back behind the school, and I purely, I would need to go back and dig through a lot of notes, but I know at least one of the, one of those options was a, was a five hundred thousand dollar option. And then there was potentially putting one down over the hillside, and that was, I know that one was the most expensive option out there. When you look at making a high school baseball infield, the depth, the bases, the pitcher's mound, the fencing, the scoreboard, the lights, the bleachers, the dugouts, all those things, you know, a half a million dollars. You know, I think there was a couple years back, softball team tried to put in a batting cage out there, and they ran into all sorts of, an hard-to-believe rock, trying to put in poles to support a batting cage. And, you know, the dark fiber came through out there, and I, you know, they had all sorts of issues bringing it kind of through that practice field. So I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go to the community to ask for that in addition, if we're walking away completely from that area. So, so if we're not doing that, the baseball boosters have put money into that field. They continue to put money into the field, they're looking at giving a pole to try to move, there's the first light pole past first base, while not in the, it's in the playing field. It's not in fair territory, but it is in the playing field. They're looking at moving that pole and at their own cost, you know, purchasing the pole, figuring out what it's gonna cost to put lights on it, and the electricity to it, but there, there is the need for the baseball field. So I would, I would suggest we keep that, that baseball field. It also is used probably four nights a week, probably five nights a week. Rory's could probably speak to this as well during the summer. I mean, I see the lights on in the baseball field, you know, almost every night during the summer. You know, so being a good community partner, it, it's a place for our youth to be able to play baseball games as well. If we're keeping that, I would certainly keep the upper parking lot, so you have a place for parents, fans, spectators to park. And my thought is if, if I'm going to watch my twelve-year-old son play, and I bring my six-year-old daughter, she might be more interested in the playground equipment than watching her brother play baseball. So if we maintain the playground. if we maintain the playground equipment and obviously there's not, we do not want to do anything with the Oaks Savannah, it's a great educational area and can continue to be that. So basically, I would look at potentially looking to sell the building in that lower parking lot, would be the areas that I would look at, if selling it is the option that you wish to pursue.
I would like to, and I'm not suggesting it is feasible, but I'd like to check into the feasibility of potentially moving the option school there as we pay rent now for it. If it becomes a charter school and with the growth rate they've had, they're going to outgrow the space they have at some point. And again, I don't know with zoning for heating and what the building has down there for zoning. Maybe it just costs too much to heat the whole building, but at least look into that since we pay rent to somebody else. Which would keep students in that, they would add a gym that they don't have now. And then that would also create additional storage for the district in parts of the building that aren't being used.
Okay.
So just checking on numbers to see if there's some sense in dollars.
I think it could also be a community center, the whole building, for example, portion for options. We need more city buildings right now, I guess the city's looking into a place for the fire department, I'm not sure how that would fit in the neighborhood, but they're looking for a new fire department area. The city is looking to expand their service areas. Darlington turned their old school into a community center, it was really nice with exercise and other things available there. We have a great need for elderly housing in this community, when you get old, you can't find a self-care or partial care unit, you have to move away. I've also heard rumblings that Southwood Tech was interested perhaps in, you know, some classes at that building. That would be something else that could be explored. And then again, it could be set up for sale to the developer, so.
Another one I've thought and heard of is a possible daycare branch of that for, you know, well, for kids, because a lot of people have a hard time finding daycare providers, it could be an option and part of it. And then, well, kind of an after-school activity area for, kind of like you're saying, community center. For kids that go after school, you know, their parents don't get done until five or six, they can go somewhere, have chaperones and be inside or whatever.
Like a private daycare center?
Yes, private daycare center that you could.
Bring all space and utilize.
Yeah, absolutely, you have use, you have bathrooms, you have rooms, you have.
Right.
Yeah.
It wouldn't be run by the district?
No, not by the district, no.
However, there are districts not too far away that have daycare centers.
Well, that would be.
I just. So I think the most important thing here, thanks for putting us on the agenda, Mitch, because it was a big concern last Tuesday night at the informational meeting. And, I mean, around the table, we've had a half a dozen different examples or ideas. There's a lot of great things that could happen with that building. And like Tony said, it's going to be, it'll be two and a half, three years before we have to worry about that. And we don't want to wait for three years to, before we start talking about it, of course, but we have time. And the community will be involved. And I could foresee the economic development coordinator out of Iowa County, I don't think it costs us a dime to have them come over, look at the situation, look at the community, figure out what would be a good fit in that area. The planning committee, the Mineral Point, neighbors, city council, of course. I think they will all have a voice.
On April 2nd, we'll give you that direction. Is it, is it, how, you know, do we, are we on the clock in two years? We need to know what's going on in two years when the elementary moves out, or we don't have to worry about it on April 2nd?
At least we can hear you.
And.
Anything else? Items for action. Prove up the payment to FEH.
Everybody should have received an email response from Kevin as I reached out one other time to try to get some clarification.
Yes.
It's been.
Uh, no, it wasn't that long.
It's on the inside cover of your package, Jeff.
It's inside here, right?
Yeah, it's on the inside of your package.
I think Friday I sent it, because I think I got it, I think I got it late Thursday and I sent it on Friday. I didn't get a chance to read it either, Mitch.
You won't find much. I want you to read it.
In essence, I asked for, you know, do you have anything, time sheets that say, Christie, at a hundred dollars an hour worked thirteen hours on this project and on this specific task? And, you know, do you have anything, and he just said his time sheets would not, his time sheets would not indicate that level of detail. Near the end of his email statement, he basically said that he has paid everybody in his company that has worked on this project, in essence, to quote Kevin, FEH is now the bank for Mineral Point. They're waiting, he's waiting for us to pay him because he's already paid his employees. And I believe the amount he tacked on the end was eight hundred dollars. Has kind of our past due or interest on the bill at this point in time. I read his statement of, you know, is the price negotiable, what's fair? I kind of read that as a, maybe wrongly, but I kind of read it as a sarcastic statement that, you know, who am I to decide what architectural firms charge? Tim might be able to give us a little. I don't profess to be an expert in that, so I.
I don't think the board was going there at all. And I, I think the board has asked Kevin to present with an itemized billing what we got in return for the cost, and he's never provided that to the board. And tonight, I cannot support using taxpayer dollars to pay that bill until I understand what we're paying for.
Probably, and I won't say itemize, I would not use that term to describe it, but.
A description.
Basically, he just listed employees and their hourly rates. That was as close to anything, after I had asked for itemized, when he left here, he said I would, you know, send the time sheets and I'd ask, do you have anything with more detail, and then this last email. And basically, he said, I don't have that level of detail in our time sheets.
Has he reached out to maybe suggest we sit down again and have maybe a meeting and, or anything like that?
He has not, when I, you know, and I guess every time I've invited him, he's had another school district, you know, because typically the second Monday of the month are a lot of district board meetings, and he's been in attendance at a lot of those. He had one, the reason he was able to show up the other night was because that board meeting got canceled for some.
But that was you inviting him, he hasn't reached out and said, hey, let's resolve this.
Correct, I have reached out and tried to invite him to multiple board meetings.
I would recommend that we seek counsel on this invoice. Bob Mueller can do that for us, don't you think?
So what exactly do you want Bob to give us? I mean, I think we're kind of between rocking and hard spot here because they're not giving us the information that we're asking for. So I'm wondering if we should try to have a meeting, not at a board meeting, but with a couple of board members and yourself to meet with him and see if he can bring up information, because I'm with Larry. I'd like a lot more detail on twenty bucks, thirty dollars before I decide I want to vote to pay it.
I think it would be different if there was a complete, you know, trust in this whole, this whole thing that's been, you know, that's gone wrong as far as complete honesty with everything, I don't think it would be an issue, that's where I think we're kind of, that's where I'm at personally.
You hit the nail on the head, it's totally trust issue.
That's me, that's me personally.
Is this something the finance committee?
I agree with you guys, but the problem here is you never had an original contract. And so when you don't have an original contract, you've kind of got a floating whatever. And so I could see, even if you get lawyers involved, there's going to be some human take here, and I think we're going to be on the losing end of it because we didn't have a contract. We just had a handshake. And I agree with you, boy, this guy's poorly documented his bill, I mean, it's outrageous. But I just don't know what we're going to get, but more pain and grief, you know, because we didn't have an original contract.
But he didn't either, though, Doc.
I know.
So I don't know what we.
It is frustrating, I agree.
I just think it's, it's really bad. Well, you know, I wish we could have been in bed with him, really.
If I remember correctly, you did get the email from Luke, that said there was a handshake agreement.
Well, that's what he said, yeah, handshake.
And so, you know, if a lawyer would look at that or even said, well, you have a handshake agreement here.
Actually, the lawyer has already commented on that and said that he didn't, because he did not have the authority to do it.
Luke did not.
Luke did not. And I put it out into an email one time ago. And hopefully you got it, but Luke did not have that authority. I think we should send it to a committee to sit down and negotiate with Kevin and maybe we can come to a conclusion.
I think he's sort of threatening us too with the clock is ticking kind of thing with the interest rate, which actually honks me off, I don't mind who hears that. I don't think that's appropriate, really, because he's poorly documented this bill, I mean, just absolutely poorly done.
Well, without documentation, you can't charge interest.
Yeah, without documentation, you can't charge interest, right, yeah.
I think maybe if we had, I mean, I'm willing to meet with him, but I don't even want one or two other board members.
You need some witnesses, would you?
But I think, I think we need to just point blank put out there that it's like, you know, you can say all you want about the handshake, it's immaterial, it's like, let's negotiate. We're not, we're not willing to pay you twenty-six thousand dollars.
With all the itemizing.
Yeah.
Well, we haven't prepared what is going to be the next step, because we've already done that yet, he was here last month.
But that was. Well, we're talking about. We need to have, yeah, we need to have lots of done.
If you think it works, and I'm fine with that.
And I think you should, because you've been the most adamant, so I think you should be.
Well, I'd certainly love to talk to Kevin again, I don't have a problem with that.
Dr. Dunn, what's your thoughts?
I don't like this any more than any of you guys do, but, you know, unless we're trying, unless the end goal is to not pay this at all. Like, say that this is a, this is a void bill, because it's not based on any contract, and we shouldn't pay a dime of it. If that's our argument, then I think it's worth paying some legal fees to fight that out. But if we're going to get into a legal battle to save two grand, five grand, you know, and all this extra meetings and hassle, we're dealing with a referendum here, I say let's move on. But I get, I get how this is a mess, and sometimes you just got to clean it up and start a new day. I mean, this was, this was a bad deal, we switched firms mid-project, you know, and and the board entered the project on loose footing, you know, we had no contract with that firm, they were kind of piecemealing, you know, as, as we were saying, don't worry, you're going to be our firm going forward, just keep helping us out. And, you know, they kept doing stuff for us out of good faith. And then we go to RFP and don't pick them and, you know, the whole thing's, the whole thing's not good. And so like I said, I don't think it's worth the mess unless the board feels very strongly that this is not a bill that should be paid at all. And I'm not sure I agree with that, given everything that FEH has provided in terms of that big booklet and, you know, all their drawings and meeting plans and all that.
I would concur, I think we need to bite your bullet and move on, unless you guys can negotiate a little less dollars in a separate meeting. But I agree with Aaron, I would not go into a full war with legal counsel, I think Aaron's got it right.
I don't think it hurt any to find out what our options are if Kevin doesn't back down, I guess that's where I was going with getting some help, because it doesn't, to this date, we're not, we're not getting any with it. And I feel that tonight I cannot support paying this twenty-six thousand.
I would like to sit down with him and see if we can negotiate somewhere between zero and twenty-six thousand.
Well, he should provide an itemized bill. There's no reason why he can't, even if he has hours of people, you know, he can say, this is what we did for you.
We have, we have all that, to an extent.
To an extent, but it's not like, okay, this is the date, this is what we did, this is who did it, this is the amount, itemized, we don't have that. He's got, this person did, you know, five hours, hundred bucks an hour, what did they do?
The phone calls, what? Yeah, how long were they, what were they, what were they about, I think that we owe that to the taxpayer.
I, I agree, I agree with you, I was just saying we have some, we have some.
And I'm not saying we shouldn't pay the bill, I'm not saying that at all, I mean, we owe them something. You know, but we have to know how much we owe them.
At the same time, you know, when we get a progress for like, for you guys on our project, what's it going to look like? Twenty percent completed for twenty percent of the project?
Progress as we go, although, so we have some deliverables.
Right, but we're not going to get a line item forty-five-page bill of what Joe C. did on Monday and Tuesday and Wednesday.
So we track all of our time, every hour, this is how I'm standing here, is track.
I think, I guess what my point is, what you would provide us is what we've been provided, is how many hours each employee worked at what rate.
I guess I can't see until they.
And the number of, right, I'm just, and the number of projects that were completed.
Yeah.
I mean, we're asking for more information than a lot of businesses ever. I worked for two companies, that job costed, and it wasn't, they were doing this specific job, it was they were working on this project. So we're asking them to incur more cost to appease us on a deal we made a handshake with and then continue to ask them to help us.
I disagree, Andy. Any car dealership, if you call, if you call up and you have a question on your bill, they'll tell you exactly what they need to your car.
Well, that's, if I want to make a motion, exactly, job cost.
I would propose a motion where a subcommittee meets with him with our authorization to pay the bill in full if necessary, but try to negotiate for less, that's what I would. I hate this bill too, but I would like to see, try to negotiate it down, I don't think you're going to wait without paying.
I don't think anybody.
But I hate to see the whole.
Send it to the finance committee, Jeff?
That'd be my motion.
I do not.
You and them say, and we're.
I don't think you want to send to the finance committee.
We just have a separate meeting with.
But you'd have the authorization and the board to dispute the sole.
And that's not a meeting I want to have.
I don't know.
Okay, we have a motion, we want to send it to the finance.
Okay, Jeff, Nate, Larry, Seth, you would like to meet?
I would. There's your ad hoc committee, they're right there.
So we have a motion to try to negotiate the bill. Can we have it, Kevin, do we have a second?
No, second.
Say that again, Jeff?
It's basically what Dr. Lindsay said, to negotiate, to negotiate with Kevin, if we can get the price down, hopefully, and or get satisfaction that we're actually paying for everything that we got. Then we come back in April and we pay the bill.
I have a subcommittee to meet with Kevin, try to negotiate.
Okay, so Ed's motion is, we agree to pay the bill in full unless, or a cost that can be negotiated.
Then I would change it.
But it had also where they're going to satisfy the building process.
But if that, if that motion goes through, then this ad hoc committee has the board's supposed to get authorization to pay the bill.
That's what I said with Tony, that's what I said, but he said he has to come back, I wouldn't have to come back to the board.
Because you can't, you don't have a committee pass.
But if we give prior board authorization, you can't do that?
I think that's a.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we can quorum at that point.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I took it as we were going to negotiate and then...
Right. Aaron brought up a good point, right?
Got to go back to the board.
I get what you're getting at.
So we'll negotiate.
Motion I have is a subcommittee to meet with Kevin and try to negotiate.
Correct.
Negotiate.
The seller is a successor.
Larry will just negotiate. Or negotiate.
And then we bring it back in April to...
Right.
So we'll board with you. Has another comment?
I'm not going to support it. I think we need to be done today. That's just, that's why I'm voting.
So there's nothing in that motion about paying?
You're going to bring it back to...
There's only going to be three of us.
Okay.
So the motion is for a subcommittee to meet with Kevin and try to negotiate the bill. Okay, Lindsey?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Bush?
No.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Bastin?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. I do think it is important that we get everything that we are paying for, once we pay for the structures and all that stuff that is part of that list. I think it would be helpful.
You know, Lindsey, it also makes it good to make sure the subcommittee has that big FEH book. It was, seemed like a summary of everything they had done, wasn't it? Like their designs.
We never got that, did we?
It's said on the table a couple times.
Oh, but we never...
I have one copy.
So maybe it's a little bit out for the discussion as far as services provided, services not provided.
Yeah, we all got different hearings.
But it's this day.
Yeah, I saw it.
Did you get it? I think we got it originally. Well, I might have another call and see if I can find mine. Good idea. Okay, move on to the second reading of the privacy policy.
Do we have any changes for this time?
Yes. It's highlighted near the end.
Page is that?
Page nine, the paper copy. And it was brought up at the last reading to make sure that we talked about cell phone use. So it is included in the second reading for private school students and adults. Cell phones cannot be used in the locker rooms or classrooms.
I only have one question. I've read through the whole thing now several times, but on number seven on page 20, we may someday have people with religious headwear? Is that allowable with these rules? I couldn't figure out if that's, you know, sayware, yarmulke. I mean, is that permissible? It is?
Yeah, we would allow that.
Okay. Until it starts in school days.
Typically, I'm not one, but the wearing of a baseball-type hat is a God-given constitutional right.
Disappointing. I didn't see you got that hat that tossed. You could have had the hat.
We have a lot of students that love wearing hats, and when the bell rings, they know, they take it off. So something... Yeah, something that is a religious belief. We would certainly work with students. So that was the suggestion. I made a motion that we approve the discipline policy.
Any other discussion?
Stefan?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Bastin?
Yes.
Okay, so Tim provided two copies of architectural contract. I had shared the draft version with you and then recommended changes. Tim, I'll allow you to jump in at any time here you wish to talk. We had a chance to talk before the meeting. HSR is, let me put words in your mouth, but HSR is fine without signing this particular contract because this one is specific to the additionary model. They are working under good faith, that they are our architect and would either...
So let me, there's a... Yeah, so the latest contract sort of, it's a basic standard AIA contract. It's the one that is very much industry-wide. Right now, we have two line items on there depending on what option we go for. So similar to the draft, where we have an option with the previous 11.92 million and associated fee that we presented at the promotional time, and then associated fee for new construction for the 19.5 million. So they're set up both ways. The comment that we were talking to Mitch ahead of time is, we're against a no big rush to rush to this. We want to do this right, get a contract in front of you. If it takes time to review it, then we're more than happy to take that time to review it fully.
Did you make all the changes that were recommended?
Yes, we made all the recommended changes. So your lawyer did go through this very well and went through basically all of this. There were some language in there that we incorporated and just went forward with it. We felt very comfortable with that and improvements.
And in all fairness, Tim was unaware of any of the other things.
But, you know, the contract's formally set up to protect everybody involved. It's a very true, this is a standard contract. So it's the B-101 contract, which is very common for our tech engineers. You'll see a similar contract when we start talking about a contractor as well. So the AIA, the American Institute of Architects, put together is this contract.
Do you want action from the board tonight? Or do you want to run this in front of the finance operations committee or the ad hoc committee that we just formed?
Bob Butler did look at this.
Bob Butler, I sent it all to Bob Butler.
They had a big email with all the changes.
So the contract that Tim holds in his hand, Bob Butler.
Who's going?
Yeah, I assume an email this afternoon.
I think it's under action items.
Yeah, we're seeking action.
So did I read my email right, that this is technically the elementary contract?
Well, it's set up to be either or.
So we don't have to come back and do a second contract if there's a successful vote in April?
That's right. All right, does anyone make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the contract as Tim has presented.
I'll second it.
Once again, Bob Butler has reviewed it. You got the standard approval.
Yes.
Can we just summarize the fees for each project that we're signing on for?
Yes, so the addition renovations, 11.92 million, your proposal, we're going to the process. We have 6.7% allocated for that. And we have a fee of $798, 640 for lump sum. Yeah, right? And then new building at 5.3%, so our fee is lower for new construction. Basically, when it begins addition renovations, a little more complicated, so a new construction is a little simpler. So it's a lower fee at 5.3% of SBA construction cost.
And it's at what total, Tim, I'm sorry?
So when that was written, we did not have a 19.5%, so we kept it the same.
Okay, so 5.3% at 19.5%.
So on the budget breakout you saw before, we did isolate the fee there.
Yeah. And I thought that that included the construction company too, correct?
So we'll have more conversations about delivery method, but known as architecture and engineering. When we say construction administration, so where are your orders, where are your eyes during construction as well? It'll be in that third independent voice. So that's the construction administration. If we go through a traditional design bid-build process, you'll have a contractor that will oversee that process or help oversee that process. If you go through a construction management model, we'll also oversee and make sure that it's implemented properly. But there would be a separate fee for a construction manager.
About the 980?
Correct. So typically, that runs 2% to 3%, 4% for those kind of services.
And that's included here, Tim?
No, because that's a decision that needs some further conversation. We would not isolate that as a potential fee. So that would have to come out of scope to be able to help with it.
I see.
So we have an asterisk at the bottom that says it's a construction manager.
Some of those construction managers, okay.
If that's something that we definitely want to go forward with, probably half to three-quarters of our jobs by now, do you have a construction manager involved? They bring great value to the table, especially under shorter time periods. But that is a conversation that you do have options on.
Okay, so just to be clear, these projects as their budget, as total cost here, 19.5 and 11.9, do not include a CN fee?
Not the way these are set up. So typically, that fee, then we break out a little bit more. If you go through that process, what they'll say is that they'll find efficiencies in constructability or in other methods to make out for that fee.
Okay.
So there's efficiencies built into that, and that's how we'll justify their upfront fee.
Okay.
So because we need to have that conversation of how best to go forward, we just isolated it as, that's not the assumption that we're going to have at this point.
Okay.
So that's why we did not convert the other sum to a lump sum is because we won't collect a fee if we do hire a construction manager, for instance. So the fee is based on construction costs. So if the construction cost goes down, if you hire a construction manager, the construction total amount wouldn't be the same. So we wouldn't collect a fee on that. So we kept it a percent in the contract right now, a 5%. So that number could still just more likely lower if you were to hire a construction manager. Does that make sense?
A little bit. And I'm sorry for it being...
No, because we base it on construction cost, not on total project cost.
So your 5.3 is on actually 14.4?
Correct. 14.4 plus site development plus allowances. But we don't collect a fee on ourselves, and we don't collect a fee on the construction manager. We'll break apart the construction costs. Thank you, guys, we have to find that.
Just before we vote, I mean, your agenda here for the roundtable discussion talks about energy efficiency and contract questions, comments, and a draft newsletter update. Did you even go through all those?
It was based on if you had time or you wanted to.
Okay. I mean, I don't want to, if you're prepared to do all that, I don't want to cut you off, so...
I know there's been some questions that we've heard and we wanted to deal with them if we wanted to, I guess, at this point.
I would like to hear about...
Yeah, I'd like to hear everything you came prepared to share.
Absolutely.
So, sorry, is there a motion on the table?
Yeah.
Okay. That's all right, we're still under discussion, yes.
Oh, on the contract, we're still in discussion about the contract. Well, I make the motion, or you made the motion, you or me made the motion. Do you have a second?
Let's discuss it, Mike, for more discussion on the contract.
Yeah.
Okay.
So there were some conversations about energy efficiency. And being clear and transparent, we wanted to basically do a little more investigation on that as well. So we asked for your current billing for the elementary school, and so we have a baseline to compare that to. So this is energy efficiency only, so it's easy utility data. So gas, electrical, we took a full candid year. You have $18,500 for gas and $29,850 for electrical. So what we know is that we can become more efficient. Doing a renovation to that building, we can become more efficient. We do that through basically increasing the efficiency of the equipment itself. So replacing the boilers and replacing air handlers, we get more efficient as we go forward. Lighting controls go a long ways. Building controls, your HVAC controls, we include the efficiency of that. And then improve your thermal envelope, so it's be increasing the R-value of your walls, of your roof, of just basically making a better enclosed building. So we project you'll save about 20% energy savings on the existing facility, all things considered equal. That is a pretty conservative estimate. We hope to even beat that. We continually partner with Focus on Energy to really capitalize on those type of investments and make sure that we can realize those type of savings. We also wanted to make sure that we're all talking apples to apples with this kind of conversation. So that's the existing facility. We also want to be mindful that we're adding square footage on to this facility, and we're increasing the overall square footage that the district will own and operate. So anytime you increase square footage that the district has under its maintenance, there's costing, utility cost during that. So whether we go forward with the previous option or the new option, we are having more square footage under the district umbrella. And the other thing that we want to take into account too is because the existing facility does not have cooling associated with it. If you run your house during the summer, you'll notice electrical costs do definitely go up. Very similar to education or school. If cooling, especially if you operate that facility during the summer months, a lot will depend on energy savings of how much you operate that facility during the summer months. We see other benefits to operating, having cooling in a facility, longer life. All the facility wood floors in particular, your gyms, tend to last a lot longer if we're going to incorporate those. The finishes tend to last a lot longer, there's better humidity control, better air quality. So there's other advantages of incorporating cooling other than just comfort and educational. But we did want to talk about energy efficiency, but then also talk about, while you're having more cooling within that facility, a lot of that will depend on how much you operate that, and we can estimate that as we keep going forward as well.
But the intent is to have capacity to cool the current facility, but when it's renovated?
So, and, yes, absolutely. And because we'd be doing a comprehensive approach there, we'd have more centralized system or chiller system we proposed, which would get more efficiency within that facility.
Good. Thank you.
But yeah, adding cooling to a facility will have an operational impact. We can be a little more strategic about that in new construction, but existing, we'll do it to improve it as well. So there are some differences there as well.
Have you had any positive? We talked briefly about like grants for sustainable energy, solar projects, other stuff like that, collaborating with university students or that kind of thing. Have you had a good experience on another project where you've had some success that's reduced cost of the total project or improved your energy savings, you know, in a 10-year, 20-year?
So probably the best program out there currently is Focus on Energy. So there's incentives and rebates available to both the homeowner and school districts like yourself to be able to capture those type of savings. So they'll do upfront incentive to offset the cost of construction, to incorporate those strategies. And then obviously, you'll get the energy savings along with the goal and your goal as well. So we'll go through that process. On a project like this, we're talking $20,000 to $40,000 type of Focus on Energy rebate money. We're starting to see more and more solar being incorporated into these type of projects. A lot of times, because you're a nonprofit, you can't capitalize on some of the tax advantages that a for-profit can. So a lot of times, we'll actually suggest that you bring in a partnership and you lease all of your roof area for solar. You get money back on the grid, and then they'll pay for the upfront costs of that, and it's a relationship like that. So there are options through... So there are options to go forward with solar as well. We'll evaluate, and we do our every job, you know, options for geothermal. I can tell you in a better country, that becomes a little more challenging. But we do look at that option. Biofuels are another option that we continually can strategize with, and if it makes sense. We also look at daylighting opportunities. So a lot of times with our lighting controls, we can automatically ramp down the lighting within even classrooms. So by the windows, we put in these nice beautiful windows, and we'll actually dim down the lights by the windows, and then have it be automatically so it ramps up the ones on the interior. Thus saving energy and creating a better atmosphere for, for, for the classroom. So yes, there's options, we'll continue to evaluate those. True incentives, probably focus is the best, best incentive out there. And so that's kind of the energy, energy efficiency. So yes, we can get more efficient with existing square footage. Building controls alone will be about ten percent of that. So if you've seen what other controls can do, HVAC controls, just with the sophistication of those type of systems, that's a huge advantage with both projects.
Okay, any other questions? Tim?
General comment on the contract. When I did the math earlier, I thought it was on the total project, but it's only on the construction costs. And I think the number reflected in the contract is six point seven percent of the total project.
Okay.
Does that need to be adjusted?
We can definitely, yeah, we can definitely adjust that, I apologize if...
So it ain't gonna probably like thirty-five percent?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, I know we adjusted already.
You talked about simply being on just initial, whole party's initial, that change in...
Absolutely.
So he was saying it's, it's the, it's basically everything but your own fees?
And a construction manager.
And a construction manager. But then, just so the percentage is applied to all of everything else?
Right.
Right?
Or if you don't use that contingency, it doesn't apply to that either?
Typically, contingency, what we normally see on districts is contingencies are used for increased scope. It will have to coordinate that increased scope. So it'll be purchasing additional furniture, it'll be purchasing, if you don't use it, we won't charge a percent on it.
That's what...
Yeah, if you choose not to utilize that, we won't charge it, but...
Generally?
Generally, generally it is, but not always. And we can adjust that at any point, as we keep moving forward.
Am I crazy to think that there might be some cost savings from utilizing some of the materials, whether it's seating, desks, whatever, at a new facility, wouldn't there be some cost savings there?
There could potentially be, and we can look into that as we keep going forward.
I thought that was mentioned...
There's costs, there's cost value to doing that, there's also nostalgic value.
Sure.
So a lot of times, we like to carry over things from a previous facility to enhance some of the history and keep that move forward. Furniture, by all means, it was, you know, that's something that we can very much move forward with and keep incorporating. Technology, if there's smart boards or definitely with that, we definitely want to encourage moving that forward.
Because I thought the nineteen five was like all-in, all-new, while you might be able to achieve a lower amount if you incorporate existing things there and bring them up to that tier.
Absolutely, I think we didn't want it. Yep. And by no means do we have to go to that nineteen point five, or look for strategies to reduce that.
And to be clear, that nineteen five was, was an accelerating number. The new construction, the relocation could be quite a bit lower than that.
So at this early, I'd say it's, it was a range. And we gave a, we presented a range of what a project like this could cost. Like anything else, there's millions of decisions to go into that number. And everything from the type of paint to the type of flooring to the type of mechanical will have an impact on that bottom line. And I think we will all want to be a part of that conversation to get the best bang for your buck.
Okay.
So we did give a range, and we picked a range to give us more flexibility.
You mentioned cooling in the current elementary school. Do you have a rough estimate of what it would take to add cooling to that school with, with the new mechanicals that you're going to install for us?
Typically for that type of facility, we would not plan a mechanical replacement without the option to have cooling in it.
Okay.
The inner air quality is just so much greatly improved with cooling, that we suggest that we would move forward with that. And also, a lot of it has to do with controllability of your system then too. And we want to be able to have that type of flexibility. So we'd highly recommend you incorporate cooling, no matter what strategy you go through. And as a side benefit, you know, we can have a little better comfort, but it's really for the air quality and then just long performance of the building.
So the subgrade plumbing, whether it's the, the heating lines that are currently in the building, or water, or waste, do you replace that in a complete renovation?
In this type of scenario, we'd like to replace as much as we could. And then some of it's going to be more easily accessed than others. We can reline, you know, a lot of times when we get in old cast iron pipes, there's options to reline them versus replace them too. So there is options, we'll do some of those too. We would like to replace as much as we can.
All right. You, you mentioned insulating the, the exterior or the interior walls of that building. How would that look, Tim?
Yeah, so a lot of times when we want to improve the R value, we'll fur out the inside of the walls. And so we'll build usually a steel stud on the inside and then insulate that cavity to improve the thermal performance.
Okay.
So that's one avenue. You know, the other thing is we can partially insulate, or there's other ways of, you know, improving the R value. A lot of times, your best bang for your buck is actually a roof area to improve the R value up there.
Would you do that up underneath then, without tearing the roof?
That could be an option, or from, or from our end all later on time. So what it, the true advantage of improving your thermal performance is then your mechanical system, your HVAC system isn't as big to begin with, and it can run more efficient from day one. So we want to size the mechanical equipment appropriately to the heat loss every game, right, on this unit?
I could be getting a little off topic here, but let's say our budget is the eleven point nine, and it goes way over. Will the board then have to decide what's in and what's out?
We can't go over the budget.
I, I understand, I'll just go back to my...
Oh, oh, I see.
So, yeah, so what we do is we'll have all sorts of options as we keep developing this. So based on how competitive the market is, we'll have bid alternates, or alternates that we bid out to give us flexibility on bid day. So if the numbers were to come in, we want those numbers obviously to come in lower. And if it's favorable conditions, then we can incorporate alternates as we choose as a community here. That's how we give that flexibility on bid day. So certain things like, do we go with a better floor tile that we know is going to perform better as an alternate? Or, you know, we can have options for a thirty-year roof versus a twenty-year roof. We'll know the true cost of that, as a board, as a community, we can decide, is it worth that or not?
Okay.
So the other thing is, we'll be doing more budget, as we know more information, that's a very high-level budget right now, we'll get more, more and more budgets as we keep going, you know, the process to...
To have a better reason, as we keep going.
Well, the, the structure will be key.
And that's a, that's a variable, and once we understand that better, we can, you know, fine tune that as well.
You mentioned, you or Brad mentioned earlier about repositioning the gym, any addition down there? Would it take much just a, a conceptual schematic for the next informational meeting to let the public know kind of what you're thinking?
I, I think there's, there's options. There's options of repositioning. It is a relatively tight site, however, there's, like any solution, even the conceptual plan that we have for the, for this site, you know, it's still very conceptual. We would want to open it up to the community, to the neighbors, to the staff, to really help fine tune that. If we put pencil on paper at this point, I think it'd be a little bit too premature. And I think we want to give it more thought and develop that plan more co-legislatively, I guess. Your recommendation. One thing we're really good at is giving options, so, yeah, we can help to evaluate those.
And we appreciate that. That's all I knew.
Any other questions? Okay. We have a motion and a second on this contract, so let's go to question, please.
Staffes?
Yes.
Bush?
Just to clarify, we're going to have the number updated before we sign it. Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Basting?
Yes.
As well, and we don't sign this.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's move on into business services, card and statement and bills payable. Motion to approve.
Some more.
We have a second.
I will say.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah. About bills payable on this align energy, I wasn't sure, is that broken down, high school versus elementary? No. I'm on page one of the bill, school district checks on that. And then I couldn't understand the elevator contract either, I didn't, what the heck is that? I didn't even know we had one, quite honestly.
We have one in each building?
No kidding, okay. I never read that. We have to pay for what there, I mean, is that inspected?
We have a, you have to have an inspected every year. You only come into the gym, you don't go down to the... So you have to have an inspected once a year, and occasionally we have to have some kind of service, there might be an alarm that goes off or some, something that needs to be serviced.
Yeah. But I, I just wondered, is align energy, is that broken down like elementary versus high school, or...
It is, on these builds, there's like high school, then there's...
Because actually, I was thinking about the energy efficiency thing before, and I saw this big energy bill, and I went, wow.
Yeah, there's several different accounts that it comes under.
Is it sixty-three hundred elementary or high school?
Or even just a rough...
My guess would be high school. You think with all...
It says new building, it's here.
Okay. With all the extracurriculars and everything that happens in this building. That's why we're going to not air condition the second grade classrooms, that'll save us some... Oh, I'm sorry, they're still here. We're open twenty percent of this town, so...
Really?
So I want air conditioning. Any other questions?
Well, that was only true, Angie told me later, I think, this...
For an audiologist, we can have track with someone who's going to provide those services for us.
I don't know, like they're always...
Are all of those included with the...
Which ones?
The align energy, is it just one number for that, or is it elementary and like the X?
There's a whole bunch of different meters.
Can't tell that function?
It looks like there's an end this.
So there's a lot of budget.
No, no, I can't.
It's high school budget or...
Because typically, typically, elementary's one hundred, middle's two hundred, high school's four hundred.
What does flasher mean?
Eight hundred.
What is, I think this is all of them.
Probably have a flash, sure, is that the highway?
Yeah, these are...
All the school zones.
School zone flashing lights, okay. So it, it does say high school or flasher or elementary school.
It does on the bills.
And then the stadium?
But based on these, based on these numbers, I can't, because I don't know what a six, six thirty, I just think that's an invoice number, not a, not a billing number. Okay.
It looks like elementary school was the twenty-six hundred eighty, and then the high school was the sixty-three.
Okay.
Those were the two chunk ones.
Yep. All right, thanks.
Six hundred for... But they're both lower than mine.
If you want to lease some roofing for some solar...
We got a shrink here.
We have, yeah. I'm starting on solar, but I won't go there right now. Okay, so is there any other questions?
No.
Okay, let's call it questions, please, Angie.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Staffes?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Basting?
Okay, employee services, approval of retirement.
The, by policy, you have a March first deadline for anybody that is considering retirement. There is one person considering retirement, but not one hundred percent sold on it, but she has turned in a letter so that if between now and the end of the school year, she makes that final decision. So it's just asking your approval in essence, if that decision is made with blessings, would you accept that retirement?
So how does that work as far as final decision and then posting?
Oh, thanks.
For a new position, as far as timeline goes?
You know...
Are we just pretty flexible?
We, we are, because I, we've, we've had teachers that come and tell us March first, I've taken another job. I have teachers that come to me in August and say, I'm taking a new job. So, you know, there is a lot of flexibility as far as that's concerned. I don't think the decision will be made in August in this case, but I think trying to, trying to hit the board's timeline and yet have enough ability to make a sound decision personally, you know, I think we can certainly grant some time, extended time.
Sure.
I think it's in the contract, wasn't it?
Yes, March first.
There's a contract, by a certain time we have to have a decision.
In, in addition to March first?
I believe so.
Yeah.
April something?
I'm, I'm pretty certain.
Okay, that's helpful.
I think part of it too, Angie, wasn't so that we didn't have ten of them, you know, so we knew kind of who was... That's the reason we said, according to the thing I remember here.
Motion, accept.
I'll say.
Any other discussion?
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Staffes?
Yes.
Basting?
Yes.
And I'd like a motion to go into closed session.
Larry, you seconded that.
I think closed session needed.
Roll call.
Yeah.
But Tony, or Dunn? Dahl? Dahl? Lindsay? Staffes?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Including this year.
Basting?